Hey, Steve. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for City of North Ridgeville for March 12, 2024. Ma'am Secretary, please call roll.
Members of the Board, Ali.
President.
Grotman.
President.
Schuman.
Here.
Abens.
Here.
Smolik.
Here.
Members of the Administration, Assistant Law Director Morgan. Planning and Development Director Lieber. City Engineer Evenson.
At this time, can everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has all the Board members had a chance to review the minutes from their February 13, 2024 regular meeting? Is there any corrections at this time? Hearing none, those minutes shall stand. I know there was some administrative approvals and zoning certificates. Director Lieber, do you mind reviewing those quickly for us?
Sure, Mr. Chair. The first was just a change in owner of the BP gas station. The second was a new business certificate for that property that the Planning Commission approved their rezoning from B3 to I2 just a couple of months ago. And then the third was just a new business in an existing office based on Sugar Ridge Road.
Okay, thank you. And the big agenda item tonight is the 2024 Master Plan presentation. I know this has been a lot of work with the community. There was a group of members of the community that made up the Steering Committee. I know the Administration wants to thank them along with the Planning Commission. So I'm going to kick it over to Director Lieber and the consultant, and they could go and show us the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an exciting night for me personally, and also I think hopefully for the City of North Ridgeville, that the first time since 2009, we're on the verge of adopting a citywide master plan that will provide some direction for the growth, development, and change that we'll expect to see in our city over the next 10 or 15 years. So again, like you mentioned, so many people helped to get us to this place, and a lot of you are here tonight. I'd just like to recognize those people who are on the Steering Committee, if you wouldn't mind standing up and being recognized. I just want to personally thank you for your participation, so you can do it. And just so many other faces in this room have been at so many meetings, the our public input sessions. It really has been a community effort. So I'm going to turn the presentation over to Sarah Bonjorno and Emily Hayes with Planning Next. So they will kind of walk through some of the highlights and then offer opportunity for the Commission to have questions and answers at the end. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Kim. We're very excited to be here tonight to work on the plan. Very excited to see a number of our steering city members hanging with us throughout this process. So I'm going to just go over a few intro slides, and then Emily and I are going to kind of tag teams reviewing at a high level some of the key recommendations that are contained within the plan documents. You also have a copy of it in front of you, and for those in the audience, there's a QR code if you want to call on the documents on your device. So we're going to go through just quickly a few reminders about our process, the plan structure, the goal areas, and share some of those key recommendations, talk a little bit about implementation, and then as Tim said, we'll happy to answer your questions. So I'm not going to take too much time. I think we've all been following along this process and participating, which is great. Again, we did have a very committed Steering Committee who's been at this over the past year now, I think. There's some focus group meetings with stakeholders at the very beginning of the process to kind of hear from different groups within the community. We of course did our technical analysis, looking at kind of distinct conditions and trends and data. And then, of course, our public engagement. We had an initial round where we're gathering ideas and kind of more open-ended that helped us craft the vision and some of the planned framework elements. Our round two was really focused on imagining what the future could be relative to language principles and town center. And then we did release some draft recommendations for the public to review here just back in the meeting room, it was before we finalized everything and make sure we heard everybody correctly and kind of had a chance for folks to chime in on things before we were finished to finalize. So this is kind of small, there was some over here where I'm sitting, but the plan context, the content of the whole plan document has an introduction to go through that process in a little more detail. We have goal areas around chapters, organized chapters, we have a chapter on the town center and a chapter focused on implementation as well as a sort of supporting chapter philosophy and some things that support the whole document. When we think about this master plan, we think about the vision of what we established with the community really early on, well, it sets that tone, it's aspirational, it's the highest sort of level statement that we can talk about the future of the community. That sets the tone. We have goals that then support that vision, and then specific recommendations that then support that goal. Those goals that then all roll up to support the vision, so you see that kind of pyramid there. It goes from, you know, the general down to the more specific. So this is the vision, the vision that we came up with from input from the first round, and we tested that back out with the Steering Committee and fine tuned it a little bit. But really, it's about North Ridgeville, the community with a strategic focus on the future. And those focuses are surrounded around abundant amenities, economic vitality, sustainable infrastructure, and access to opportunities for all. Our goals, which organize the plan, focus on ensuring efficient and intentional use of land, fostering a diverse and resilient economy, offering choice in housing, developing attractive amenities, creating a connected community, and providing responsible and accountable leadership. So I'm going to turn it over to Emily now. She's going to walk through several of the chapters here and highlight some of the context and the recommendations.
So as Sarah said, the different goal areas are organized into chapters, the first of which is around land use. And this is really setting an opportunity to manage growth in a way that supports the community vision and the desired character. So we're really considering strategic opportunities within the realm of land use within this chapter. Through the process, you know, a few things really popped out. North Ridgeville is primarily residential community, and it's growing. It's growing fairly quickly. And within the population of North Ridgeville, the cohort that's growing the fastest is people 65 and over. And that really makes it important for us to ensure the community develops in ways that support residents at all stages of life. With that, we also understand that as growth happens, there's a really intentional way that we need to expand infrastructure, public services, utilities. So we've developed land use principles that sort of guide the recommendations that follow. They speak to sort of how and where growth will happen and what the focuses of land use should be. So focusing on strong neighborhoods, parks, open spaces, and recreation facilities, responsible expansion and management of infrastructure, expansion of employment areas, attractive gateways, and well-designed commercial corridors, and a strong town center. And a few of the key recommendations that really support the goal within this area are highlighted here. The numbers that you see correspond to the number of the recommendation within the plan chapter, that's why they're out of order. But really, these are sort of the recommendations necessary to start this work. So that includes updating the zoning code to better guide growth, improve development standards, and to make sure that the development that happens is done so in strategic locations that really support the community in the ways that support that vision.
Should we, I have a question. Should we go through all of it, or should we pause at each chapter? I guess that would be...
A question to the Commission is, would you like the opportunity to pause at the end of each topic to have any discussion or question, or would you rather just go through all of the topics and then Q and A or discussion at the end?
I'll open it up to the rest of my colleagues.
I would say go through the whole thing before questions.
Yeah, I would concur with that, too.
Great, okay. All right. Moving on to economy, then. And the economy chapter really focuses on the quality and the density of jobs within North Ridgeville and sets the foundation for a healthy financial future. Looking at sort of the community as it is today, realizing that relatively few North Ridgeville residents actually work within the city, and that the opportunities to generate sort of the most revenue for the city come from land uses that have high-valued property and buildings or high-wage jobs. And given the fact that North Ridgeville is predominantly residential, the city's financial well-being really is dependent on being a very desirable place to live. And so that sets up the recommendations we wanted to highlight. They do speak largely to attracting and supporting businesses. So first, preserving and acquiring land for employment uses, making sure that the land supply is available, creating programs to support small businesses that are interested in locating or starting up in North Ridgeville, and improving some of the areas that already exist, either through zoning updates or for additional support that helps retain and expand existing businesses. Within the housing chapter, we focus largely on providing choice in housing, making sure that housing that's available is attractive and affordable to current residents and helps support future residents. We realize that the majority of the housing that's being produced is single-family, many are owner-occupied, and that the development costs have resulted in increasing costs for both owners and renters. And again, we go back to sort of the population that's growing with the 65 and older cohort growing the fastest, that will have an impact on how the housing market needs to evolve over the next 10 years. So one of the first steps is to really understand what the existing zoning is doing and updating that in line with the goals of this plan. Providing choice in housing type does come through a lot of that zoning and implementation. And it does need to be complemented with policies that support older adults through aging-in-place policies, and creating some opportunities for different types of housing. We also want to consider the single-family zoning, knowing that that will be well utilized, and make sure that the products that come out of that serve the residents and create communities that people want to live in.
Great, Emily, I'm going to jump in here and talk about our amenities chapter, about developing attractive amenities and priority given to design spaces that can be for everybody to come together. We know that there's a lot of great amenities provided within subdivisions, but this is really about citywide areas, multi-use spaces, park, recreation facilities that are really accessible to all, which helps foster that sense of community in North Ridgeville and really elevate civic pride and attraction to the place. So a little bit about the community context. So the total developed parkland, which is usable or accessible, you have a lot of open space, there's distinguishing here about whether it's accessible or usable, is only about 3.6 acres per thousand residents. The national median for that is 10.6, so I think a little bit, kind of up that a little bit for folks within the community through the recommendations. Again, thinking back on what Emily said, supporting services for the growing older population, and then just maintaining those high-quality amenities to help attract and retain the breadth of the community. So some of the key recommendations focus on creating more passive recreational spaces, expanding bike network. We heard so much from people about wanting to be able to get around in North Ridgeville through multi-trails, more multi-trails and bike network, bike network. We also, we're going to talk about the town center a little bit more later, but including a community gathering space as part of that future town center concept, and then creating a plan for the 20-acre site at Shady Drive as well. Next chapter is on mobility and infrastructure. This is really focused on creating, you know, a connected community, so ensuring accessible space and multi-mobile transportation options, and maintaining mobility for residents. Also, you know, considering beyond the traditional sort of physical infrastructure needed to support that water supply et cetera, but also thinking about the future and technology and sustainability and community focus on that. So, you know, right now, the community has few options for active mobility, so some recommendations we're looking to help support that. Public transportation options are highly limited as well, really just limited to older adult population. And just, this may seem obvious, but you know, you want to expand and improve on your physical infrastructure as, you know, you're growing your households as well, as you grow that infrastructure piece as well. So a couple of the key recommendations here is about coordinated planning efforts related to water standards, sewage, stormwater utilities to ensure recommendations align with the master plan, improving mobility and connectivity throughout the city, especially through non blue-eyes transportation methods. We've heard a lot from folks as part of this process that, you know, they want to be able to walk, and there may be places that are close by that are just still have sidewalks and don't have crosswalks or safe crosswalks. So really looking at those areas. And there are through here as well, identifying high-risk areas that require pedestrian aid community, there are quite a few places that people are making their own places to cross versus coming to a corner and doing a safety measure, so identifying those as well. And then the other piece is collaborating with the Larran County Transit and Greater Cleveland Regional, trying to already to explore, you know, extension of transit services potentially in the city, and then simply planning for additional community resources to serve that growth. The leadership chapters, a little bit different, it's really important, you know, it's about providing that responsible and accountable leadership. It kind of blends in a little bit with implementation because it's really key for implementation, but really just ensuring that city leaders, you know, continue to be dedicated, you know, dedicate the resources, an effort required to realize the community's vision through this plan, working closely with residents, businesses, other government partners, and within the city organizations to be transparent and collaborative in order to really realize what's all in the plan. And so I think this whole chapter is really focused on improving operations and communications between staff and departments, and also reinforcing those relationships with local and regional partners that are so important to the community day and age. In this day and age, it's very rare that anyone's doing anything alone in Philos. They're all collaborating in order to get things done, so that's going to be important going forward. And then including, identifying maybe new partners, the new opportunities for links to planning the future. So the key recommendations for this chapter focus on developing a communications plan, implementing a training program for all boards and divisions, providing ongoing staff training and professional development opportunities, and then also creating new local events that really bring the community together and strengthen that civic engagement and drive. I'm going to take it back over to Emily now to talk through the town center chapter.
Yeah, so the town center was a focus of engagement and really capitalizes on a lot of the trends that we're seeing in North Ridgeville. It's expected that in the next five years, within the area of 15 minutes around the town center location, the number of households will increase, their incomes will increase, education levels will increase. And what that translates to is customers and demand, opportunities for retail and for restaurants, and for the attraction of retailers and for restaurants, given that incomes and education levels tend to sort of correlate with buying power and some of their preferences. It's also important to note that there will be a billion dollars of spending capacity within that 15-minute segment, and as you get further out, that decreases pretty dramatically. So the town center concept needs to be highly competitive in experience and amenities in order to be really viable. So community feedback focused on sort of what belongs in a town center, what is the vision for what should be there. And we heard pretty clearly that small local retail and restaurant is preferred over large chains, that civic gathering space is really important, and residential can be included but is ideally above retail, so that that ground-level experience is not retail or is not residential. There's a desire for open space, and that does include trails, paths, and sidewalks to build upon sort of the mobility that we're seeing recommended elsewhere. And we do include within the plan sort of high-level steps to a town center, just to illustrate that this is a long process. There are a number of things that need to happen in order for a town center vision to be realized, and that includes a lot of very sort of early support and sort of discussions about what the town center should be, as well as sort of technical steps in analysis and preparation and planning. It will require a lot of the partnerships that we've highlighted in the leadership section, and then just sort of the process of actually going through development.
Okay, and then the most important chapter of all, implementing, right? We can create a great document, we went through this great process with the public. We went through this great process with the public, and we've got a great document with a lot of really great recommendations, but we don't want it to sit on this shelf, we want it to be implemented, and that requires, you know, I guess some education and intentionality around it. So the plan is a long-term policy guide that requires ongoing, you know, coordination with annual work programs and budgets, CIP, with development approvals, economic incentives, private development decisions, all of it needs to be considered within this planning document. Some of the key recommendations in the implementation chapter is about, you know, just general awareness and understanding of the master plan out in the larger community, preparing an implementation evaluation. It's really important that you're monitoring and reporting out as you make progress on your plan recommendations here. That goes back to transparency and accountability, and when you get 10 years down the road, it'll make your audit process a lot better to say like, what did we do, what didn't we do, and why, and you start to maybe do an update. And also, this is really important, institutionalizing the plan within the city operations, so requiring staff reports to reference the master plan, so if something's coming out of a, you know, staff request that they're referencing, this is in support of this recommendation or this goal area objective, is really important, again, to tie things back in. That doesn't mean that you, you know, there's going to be things that fall outside the plan sometimes, you can be opportunistic still, and I think this plan is in a way that is designed in a way that can be flexible with the document, but you're going to want to be intentional about looking at your plan document and referencing it when you're making the document. That's it, that was very high level. So we're all happy to take any questions, and I think you have a full document in front of you, so there were other questions on other recommendations, we're happy to answer those.
And Mr. Chair, just to point out, I think we have 83 recommendations in the plan, that was the tally. So each of those recommendations has a long description and some justification and sidebar, so clearly we didn't want to spend the, you know, three hours necessary to kind of get into that granular level. But, you know, I'm sure that the Commission has reviewed this document at the meeting, if there's any area you want to drill down in, we can certainly go to that section and have a more detailed conversation if you, if any member would like to do so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the great presentation. I guess since I sat in on that master Steering Committee, I sort of have a unique look because I was there from the beginning. I do want to give acknowledgement to the Mayor, Council, and Administration. This truly indeed was a community plan. The city just didn't hire a consultant that hid in a closet and then just provide the plan. No, I mean, everything that's in here was community-driven. So thank you. I think that goes, going to go a long way to help, you know, that way, now we have this tool that we have to use. Now, some important facts, just sitting through this whole process, that sort of stuck with me. You know, you're going to hear the word bedroom community. Yes, North Ridgeville right now is a bedroom community. I think they even talked about the fact that only 13% of the workforce lives in North Ridgeville. I'm sorry, only 13% work in North Ridgeville. 16,000 people who live here are going to another community. That's all our income tax dollars that's gone. You know, there's a community to the east of here, they have a population of 32,000, they have 32,000 people who work there. So income tax is a huge thing, and that's how cities get stuff done. So right now, if continuing development, we're going to be out of open space in 10 years if nothing happened. So I think timing, we need to do something now. That's why it's important we did this master plan. Otherwise, you know, all that, all that R1 area, all the white, is going to continue to build out. I know a lot of council, the mayor, density, density, why are we putting all these new subdivisions in? Well, unfortunately, the city really can't do anything about it because that's how it was zoned. But now we have a plan in place that will help us for what I call smart development. I think that's where we're at. And then some other stuff that caught my eye was the big population boom in 2000. The reason for that was infrastructure improvements. The city put a giant sanitary sewer in that opened up all that land. I think we're at the next phase now. Center Ridge Road, that's a giant infrastructure improvement. That's going to be a catalyst for all this new development. So we had in 2000 that, now we're going to have Center Ridge. So I think we're at a great opportunity here to control that. Like I said, smart development. The other thing was 40% of the housing since 2000, that is a lot. But the most, the other startling fact is 40% of the housing was installed under 1969. So that means we, between those, you have like hardly any in that middle age group. It's all new or old. So that makes North Ridgeville very unique, and that's why there's a lot of flooding issues, because a lot of that older stock, you know, they have to do upgrades. And that's, you know, that's sort of the stuff we're seeing right now. So that's pretty much my comments. I thought, I thought it was an excellent plan. I appreciate it, and I'm going to open it up to the floor. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Mr. President, sir, I think it's awesome. I love the plan. Long overdue. It's excellent. I love it. That's why I moved my business here. You know, I'm going back, 20 years ago, I bought this property, everybody thought it was crazy. I'm, you know, building my, you know, mark the million-dollar project in Rich Tucky is what it was called, okay? Everybody thought it was crazy. But you know what? It's been very, very good for us. Between, you know, Mayor Gillis at the time and President Council getting forklift down there, it was arms-wide open. Right decision, I love it. It looks great. Whatever we can do, let's do it. Thank you.
Under the implementation, it's more specifically housing, mentioned that we want a wider variety of choice, from affordable to what's presently going into it. And I guess my question would be, how do you implement, especially the lower income? Because your developers aren't interested in putting in low-income-type housing. That's not where their money is, and we are a capitalist system, and I'm just wondering how that can be accomplished?
So, you know, housing choice is about doing more than just, you know, traditional R1 subdivisions. So, you know, we have a challenge in the community with our zoning and our charter, our zoning that has so much land zoned R1 in our charter that requires any, you know, multifamily district to go to vote of the people. All of that changed in 2022, and now we can do things like mixed-use developments that we couldn't do before without having that additional hurdle of going to the people. So, you know, apartments, townhouses, you know, attached, you know, three-family, like all these are ways that you can reduce housing costs. I know that there's always concern in the community of, you know, we heard loud and clear that people don't want high-rise apartment buildings and small shoeboxes for people to live in. But we also know that there's a growing number of people that don't want to maintain, you know, large properties, and that we just want to have something for everyone in North Ridgeville. The proportion of that is really up to council as you just make zoning decisions about, you know, how to amend our zoning code or rezone property in the community. But the goal is to kind of get away from that one style of housing, and by providing multiple kinds of housing in different scenarios, whether it's, you know, single-type districts that are residential, or even mixed-use residential districts is one of the ideas in the plan that we had, where you could incorporate, you know, more traditional lots with other types of housing product in the same development, so it still maintains that residential character but could appeal to people at different price points. So I think that's what we're talking about, which is not mandating price points, which we don't do, it's just creating different ownership opportunities, size of lots, amenities, those ownership structures, all those things I think can help provide more options and more choices in North Ridgeville.
Yeah, I think you hit on, I would just say it's really about, if you think about yourself, and, you know, you're just out of college, right? So, and then when you want to get your first home, is there an option to do all of that within North Ridgeville? I'm going to get an apartment, then I'm going to get a starter home, then I may need to get a bigger home because I've got a family, and all now my kids are off of college, and I don't want all that yard and stuff, and it's too big of a house, and it's two-story, and I want something that's, again, that aging-in-place, so that people don't have to move out when they want a different housing product, but they can move within their community. And so really, I think that's
And so really, I think that's what it's about, making sure that we've got all that spectrum of choice.
Well, I hear what you're saying, that we can now do mixed developments. But the charter still, if I'm not mistaken, if somebody wants to put up condos and that type of development, it still has to go in front of the voters. And that's going to be an issue. Because I have to admit, as a councilman, what I get constantly in my ear, especially being on the planning commission, that these housing developers are shoehorning in all these homes in smaller and smaller lots. And many of the citizens within North Ridgeville don't like it. They want, in fact, there's a movement that they want to put in minimum sizes of one-acre lots, if not five-acre lots. I'm not saying I agree with it, but I'm just saying it's there.
So I guess that's a perfect segue for one of my things that I think it's sort of a red flag that we might have to be cautious of. I know during this process, a lot of people wanted to maintain the agricultural feel of North Ridgeville, along with some of the larger lots, the real, the rural residential. And we actually came up with a land use for that. So I guess now it's going to be the hard part is protecting that land use. And I'm not so worried about this current administration or council, but perhaps down the road, you never know, a different council and administration could come in, and they might think differently of that. Even though the general populace decided, no, I think that's a good idea for North Ridgeville. So I guess, how do we protect that? You know, I guess even, I guess legislation, but legislation could only go so far.
So, you know, a master plan is a policy document. It's not zoning. So, you know, in order to prevent development of housing subdivisions, the, either, one of two things. You either rezone property or you change the district and what the requirements of the district are to make it more the type of development that the city would think is appropriate for that area. So, again, like, the, the master plan document should be used as a guide. So if, if someone is proposing a rezoning, you look at the rezoning against the plan. Or if council's considering creating new districts or rezoning property, that, again, this is used as a guide. When it comes to preservation, you know, my opinion is that preservation primarily comes from the private property owners, that the city would not be in the business of actively preserving farmland. Like, we're in the business of providing for economic development, for infrastructure, not for, you know, setting aside. But we can support those that wish to do that. We can support conservation groups. We can support those private property owners that wish to do that. Or we could be, you know, a connector in that case. So, you know, I think that's, as you point out, a challenge in this community is kind of the tension between, you know, the preservation and the development. But I think we need to focus on what will generate, you know, tax revenues, what will support growth and development, what supports our current residents. I think that needs to be, as a city, our, our top priority.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, concerning Town Center, the one plan that I saw, and I'm sorry, I couldn't see it here, suggesting that City Hall be part of that, New City Hall be part of that Town Center. I have to admit, I'm not real excited by doing that. Open civic area, absolutely. But City Hall, not necessarily. I look at it from a tax point of view. Town Center is going to be a tax-generating area. Not sure City Hall plopped right in the center of it is in our best interest. I understand one of the reasons, and I'm not going to go into it, for having City Hall in Town Center. But it's, it's not a deal breaker for me, but it's something that I'm concerned with. I think there's other places that City Hall should be put rather than in Town Center, mainly because of taxes. And as the mayor will point out to you, we need tax money.
I think throughout the discussions, there was also maybe talk about senior center also at the Town Center. And I think through the steering committee, the administration sort of loosened up what their total idea what that Town Center was going to be. And I think that's a good thing. Because, you know, I mean, this is the mile-high document, you know? We're not down at that programming stage or figuring it all out. But I think it's good that we're having this open dialogue that, you know? And I would, I would tend to agree with you that city, yeah, because you want, you want generating income. I mean, I'm assuming it's going to be a TIF district. So you're going to want, you know, you're going to want income generated. So that way, tax, that, that waterfall tax, if you will, will be used for infrastructure projects down the road. So if we put a City Hall there, that's just taking away that potential of the TIF, if you will.
I have to admit, I, I think the Town Center is probably going to go faster than what we're anticipating. And the indicator is, I was reading about this. We're getting a new bank branch, Chase Bank. Chase Bank is busy closing offices all around the region because of lack of business. But they chose North Ridgeville to put in a branch, which is indicating that their, their bankers are saying, this is an up-and-coming area for commercial and economic activity. And that's why I think Town Center may occur faster than maybe we're anticipating. So it's important that we are looking at this right now. So that was my indication, that we are an up-and-coming economic area. And that was a great indicator. Even though we still have some citizens that think it's a coffee shop. But, but that's why I am excited. And I have to admit, too, I like the fact that I think it's still part of Town Center, that we will put in some type of town, townhomes. And I think that's an excellent idea. But I'm not sure how that's, that's going to, how that mixes with our charter and that type of thing. So I don't know. I have to wait for legal to inform us of that one.
And Mr. Chair, to that question, I think that was one of the reasons for that charter change was so that mixed-use zoning districts could be approved by council and not have to go to vote of the people. So this would be one district, a Town Center district. And within that, council can determine what percentage of, or density of residential versus other uses could be permitted. And, you know, this was our first step, creating a concept. I appreciate, you know, your comments about City Hall. And, you know, if City Hall's not here, though, it has to go somewhere and be built somewhere and with some money. So one idea was that with a public-private partnership, there could be an opportunity to spend less of our money and more private equity to provide facilities that we might need.
That's the reason why it's not a deal breaker for me, for that reason.
But, again, we're, we're early in that conversation. And, you know, there's no finished product here that we're asking the commission to vote on. Just the idea that having the combination of a civic use with restaurant, retail, office, residential is a, is a kind of a proven kind of blend that has worked in other communities and that creates, you know, kind of day-and-night vibrancy, like daytime populations, nighttime populations, and support for some of those restaurant-retail uses that our community seems to really want to see here. So we'll work that out as we record.
Question I have, and I guess this would be more for our, our legal department, as it pertains to our zoning, are we, can we readjust what particular zoning actually is defined as? In other words, we can remove some uses from, say, B3 or, and that type of thing? Are we allowed to do that?
Absolutely. Yep.
So we could zone out additional car washes and coffee shops?
It's like, one of the things that I would just add to that is that the ability to zone is one of the hallmarks of home rule. So that's been established in case law for a long time. So yes, we do have those abilities.
That's good.
And the other thing this, this report sort of recommended was, like, for example, the Town Center. It might have its own, you know, we might get down to where we start creating its own rules, like architectural guidelines, if you will, that only pertain to that district. So that way, we make sure that, you know, that it's being, you know, built the way we want to look at it, you know? Might control signage a little bit better. And then we might limit the actual maximum height buildings could go just within that district. It gives, we could give a little bit more, you know, power to the city, if you will, to actually control how that is going to be built out.
That's where you and I might have a disagreement. I'd like Town Center to be multi-stories?
Oh, I agree it's going to be multi-stories. But I don't see, I don't see, I don't see anything above our ladder.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I, I just want to say, I haven't been in town that long, few years. And I've just seen an enormous amount of just real simple changes, real subtle things going on. And I think it's a really good, it's a good thing to do this, this master plan. Are we five years, every five years we update this? Or is this 10 years? I mean, it's, it's a, it's an excellent, excellent document. And we have some, we have the power to make some zoning changes to match this. And, and we can't make developers come in and do what we want them to do. We have, we have to set the table for them. And this document and zoning will help us do that. And so, but again, there's so many little things I've seen. I think the branding, the rebranding efforts that have happened are terrific. I know some people don't like them. I, I liked them from day one, and they've grown on me even more since they've been up. Just some of the other stuff, since I've been on the, on the planning commission, the opportunity to get some education, the, is it the AIA workshop? Is that, I'm sorry? ABA? I don't know. Oh, okay. I, I've had the opportunity to attend some of those workshops before, years ago. And I'll tell you, I think probably, it was probably like five, six years ago I went to one, everybody was talking about Town Centers, mixed use. Everybody was talking about it. Almost every community is talking about this now. They've got, either they have something already zoned or they're getting ready to. So this isn't like we're reinventing the wheel here or anything like that. Developers are going to come if we give them an opportunity to. But they're going to have their own ideas, too. So we're going to have to, there'll be some tussle. But it's not necessarily a bad thing. But again, if we, if you don't lay the groundwork for them, they're not going to come because they don't want to fight over it. They don't want to fight to put up the thing they want to do. So, and again, this is, I mean, obviously, this Town Center thing, this is a, it's a great idea. It, it obviously works. So hopefully, we can pull something like this off ourselves. I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
I think you hit on a really good point, that you need that private-public partnership, if you will. Because, you know, the private, they won't be able to do it by themselves, and public can't do it by themselves. You need that, that buy-in by both parties. And that's how you get a successful project. And we just have to lay out that groundwork, set the table. I like that, if you will.
There you go. We have that.
All right, is there any other questions?
As was pointed out to us during that training session, we have to make it easy for developers to come to North Ridgeville. Because they're going to go someplace else where it's easier, if we make it difficult. And that's what I like about this Ridgeville Ready. We're showing them that, come on in. We'll welcome you, we'll help you where we can. And so that's, that's the important thing about this. And City Council, I'll speak for them. We have our work cut out for us as far as zoning issues are concerned. But we've already demonstrated that we can get that through on a quick basis, not needing emergency clauses.
Go ahead.
I don't want to keep, like, beating a dead horse, but almost, you know, being a business owner in this city for 20 years. I did my homework, I did my research 20 years ago. And you look over the occupancy permits, what we issue, other cities. We're like number one in the state. Avon, Medina, I mean, that, that speaks volumes. But housing, you only get so much tax dollars off that. You do. We need business, okay? And whatever we got to do to attract business here, I think that's what we should go after. My opinion, but, you know.
I, I, if you, if you look over the last few years, North Ridgeville seems to be headed in that direction. I mean, we got that, if anybody's driven by that trucking terminal, that is an awesome facility.
Huge.
And, and what's even better is no tax abatement.
Great job.
And we are also considering tax abatement for business moving in. That's a foreign business at this point. They're looking at North Ridgeville. And so we're headed in the right direction.
Okay, is there any other further questions or comments? I guess I'll open it up to the administration if they have any questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I have a fairly practical one. You were talking about a high-level view, and granular was mentioned. Where do you see this document intersecting with, like, council when they're making their decisions, or planning commission when they're making their decisions? How, how do you envision they, they will use this tool?
Yeah, I would like everybody to have their copy with them at all times, on your desk, in your bag. So anything that comes up, you whip it out, and you've got a spot to, to help either engage in conversation about something or make a decision. So I think you're hopefully going to be using it on a really regular basis. I think Kim and, and, you know, with the staff and some of the internal, like, with work programs and budgets, they should be referencing it so that it's always in the forefront of people's minds, right? You don't just think, tonight, this is great, and then I show it on my, you know, shelf, and don't think about it again for a few years, right? It's not that kind of plan. It's really supposed to be a living, working document that you're, you're, we call this term working the plan. You're going to start tomorrow, right? You've got this or one other document, you'll start in on it, right? So it, it does go from the more broad, like, the vision down to the, you know, recommendations are really where you're going to see, you know, rolling up your sleeves. But I think every so often, it's good to touch, touch base or look at those goal statements and look at your vision to make sure that, you know, your, your, the little things you're doing along the way are really rolling up into that overall, larger vision, if that makes sense.
I guess to add to that, I, I think, you know, Planning Commission is going to be the more tactical group when it comes to all the zoning recommendations of the plan, spearheading and reviewing, you know, reviewing where, we've just started an audit of the zoning code, and that's going to be, over the next month, we're going to be doing some focus groups and assembling a steering committee for that. So we're already kind of launching some of these plan recommendations as we're going through this adoption process. So Planning Commission, you know, will be, when it comes to reviewing zoning updates, rezoning requests, development proposals, this is a good tool. Council's a little bit different. You know, council controls the purse string. So, you know, how, our view, how council can use this is come budget season, when requests are being made, to kind of weigh the requests against, well, how does this fit into our master plan? Is this, you know, not, again, not every single project, not every culvert replacement's listed in here. But it's, is this infrastructure in support of existing neighborhoods or needed growth for the community? Like, how, how can this, how can these requests be weighed against the plan? So that's really how I see council's role more, and then also in their, in their legislative role in adopting code changes or rezonings or those kinds of things as well.
Yeah, I'm just, I have one thing. I think we were really intentional in this plan document to write the recommendations with a sort of verb leading and they're action-oriented, so you know if you've done it or not. I mean, some, some plans, there are like a lot of platitudes, or they say nice things, but then you're like, well, did I really, did I do that or not? I'm not sure. But in here, you know, it's, it's, you know, build this, identify this, create this program. So it should be, I think, hopefully, as you go, go through this, when you start to look at it every year, or two years, or three years, you'll be able to tell where you've made progress because of the way it's written and very action-oriented and with implementation in mind.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Is there any further questions or comments? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Go, go ahead. Okay, I will.
Now, if, if, we could always table it if, if everyone still needs to review some more, so I don't want to force anybody into a decision, but we could have a motion here if, if everyone's okay with it.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we, that we recommend the North Ridgeville Ready Master Plan to council.
Second.
All right, Ma'am Secretary, call roll.
Ali?
Yes.
Grautman?
Yes.
Schuman?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Smolik?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, Ma'am Secretary, next on the agenda.
Ordinance number 2024-31 and ordinance amending section 1268.02 of North Ridgeville codified ordinances to eliminate truck terminals from the list of conditional uses in the B3 Highway Commercial District, referred by Council to Planning Commission on March 4th, 2024.
Okay. Director Lieber, some background on this?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Some months ago, a moratorium was introduced on truck terminals in the B3 district. You know, there was some discussion over the appropriateness of that kind of heavy traffic and heavy wear kind of activity in the B3 district, given that so many B3 properties abut residential areas. It was felt that it might not continue to be appropriate in that district. So a moratorium was enacted to give some opportunity to review. At this point, my recommendation is just to eliminate it from the B3 district. As I mentioned in the discussion of the master plan, you know, we're just beginning to embark upon a, a very comprehensive zoning audit that will then be followed by recommendations and code updates. So rather than just have this kind of waiting around in the wings or attempting to, you know, craft some specific conditional use standards, it felt maybe more appropriate just to eliminate it from the district while we reconsider these standards, see if we think it might be more appropriate in an industrial district, like when you think of the Dayton freights of the world, those truck uses are, are very heavy on our local infrastructure. So when you think of all the orange areas on the map, that could be a lot of trucks through, you know, through our main community corridors. So that was my suggestion to just kind of set this aside, remove it from the B3, and then we can kind of tackle that more comprehensive list of uses as we navigate our way through our zoning update process.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
I was going to go through finding the fact.
Go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Is there any questions or comments from the administration?
Christina.
Okay, is there any questions or comments from the general public? Hearing none, public section's closed. Is there any questions or comments from the commission?
Just, just a question, really. So is most of Center Ridge Road B3? Is that the?
Much of it is, not all. There's five B districts, so they're, depending on what area Center Ridge you're at, but B3, probably maybe more of our commercial corridor is owned B3 than other B districts. But again, a lot of those are right up against side streets and residential neighborhoods where that kind of traffic seems.
Has anybody been knocking on the door to build one of these?
Um, not recently, although there's one that has been operating illegally now for a couple of years.
Thank you.
Through the, through the chair?
Go ahead.
Pardon my ignorance, what is Taylor Parkway zoned as?
I, too.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Center Ridge, as far as like side streets, like, what about Maddox, Case, Trucks, weight? Was that going to affect them also?
This would eliminate the opportunity for new truck terminals in B3, so wherever B3 zoning exists. So these kinds of uses would still be permitted in I districts.
Because there's a lot of commercial property on like a Maddox that been there for quite, you know, 40, 50 years.
It would not change rights to any existing legally operating business. If there was a truck terminal in a B3 and this were introduced, it would continue to operate as legal, non-conforming for its life.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. The definition of truck terminals, is that, could that potentially be a single bay? Or are we talking like multiple bays?
I would have to read the definition, I can't answer that.
Okay. I mean, I do know, like, I don't, does Marx have a truck bay? I know I've designed Marx with truck bays.
That is, that is not the main use, that is a retail use that would have accessory deliveries.
So that's an accessory use, that's not?
Right.
Okay, so that doesn't, that's not included in this?
This would be, this is, this is where the main use is, a trucking facility.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments from the commission?
Yeah, through the chair, a question I would have is, I can name at least two places within my ward where trucks are parked, operating, in R1 areas. Is that something that we can look into?
Yes.
All right, is there any final questions or comments from the commission? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we recommend ordinance 2024-31 to council. Ask for a second.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Ma'am Secretary, please call roll.
Ali?
No.
Grautman?
Yes.
Schuman?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Smolik?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
All right, is there any other final business brought before the Planning Commission for tonight? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.